Thank you for coming to our beautiful campus this evening. We're very excited to have you here this evening. And as you've heard, I'm Michelle Deegan. I am the Dean of Academic Life here on campus. I don't know if you know it or not, but Muhlenberg College and the Muhlenberg family have a rich political history, fitting for this evening's town hall. In fact, Frederick Augustus Muhlenberg was the first Speaker of the House of Representatives, and he was the first signer of the Bill of Rights. So there you go. Okay. And honestly, throughout the years, members of Congress, as well as Pennsylvania's elected and appointed officials, have held events on our campus to communicate with constituents as we are this evening, ensuring that our democratic process includes the multiple voices of our community. So again, enjoy your time here on campus. Before I introduce Congresswoman Wild, just some points of instruction. So hopefully everyone's cell phones are silenced so that they're not disrupting our evening's conversation. As you have questions, because this is a town hall, you have the opportunity to direct questions to the Congresswoman. To do so, we will have staff members on either side holding up microphones. So if you have a question, please walk to the person with the microphone, the closest microphone, and you'll be able to ask questions. If you are unable to walk to the microphone, just hold up your hand, and someone will come and ask the question, let you ask the question, okay? All right. The next thing, a point of order, is for us to hear from the dear Air Force Honor Guard. Are they coming in? Yes? I would now like to introduce members of Muhlenberg College's college Republicans, college Democrats, and our nonpartisan bird votes clubs to come up to the stage and as we all recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Forward! Hoop! Right! Hoop! Forward! Hoop!
Thank you. Okay, for the formal introduction. Congresswoman Susan Wild has been a member of the Lehigh Valley community for more than 30 years. Her two adult children were born and raised in the valley where they attended public schools. Susan built a successful legal practice while raising her two children and became the first woman to be appointed as Allentown City Solicitor. In November 2018, Congresswoman Wild was elected as the first woman to represent Pennsylvania's 7th Congressional District in the U.S. House of Representatives. Representative Wild has been appointed to the House Education and Labor Committee, the House Ethics Committee, and the House Foreign Affairs Committee. She is committed to fighting for quality, affordable health care for all, an economy that benefits every member of our community, and reforming our political system to return to government to the American people. Please welcome Susan Wild.
I want to thank the dear color guard and those of you who came up to the stage for the Pledge of Allegiance. I am always very happy when I see young people involved in our political process, and I really think that it's a testament to the quality of the education you're getting here that all of you are involved. I'm really happy to see a full house tonight. There must be something we're not in the news that not everybody is here. But before we get started with questions, I just want to say a couple of things, and then I'm going to turn this over to you, because this is your hour, and it's designed for you to be able to ask me questions and for us to have a conversation about what I'm doing, what I'm working on, and what's going on in our country. So I'm just going to start by saying, first of all, that I really am gratified to see all of you here. One of my favorite things to do is to come back to the district and to meet people, meet constituents, go into places of employment, and talk to the people who are working there, to have round tables on subjects like education and manufacturing, and how we're going to build out our workforce so that we can fill these great jobs that we have throughout the district. You know, the good news is, the economy is strong. The bad news is, we've got manufacturers who literally can't get all the product out that they want to produce because of not enough of a workforce. So I'd love to come back and actually talk to people and hear what's on their mind and find out what they think needs to be worked on. And along those lines, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, at the back of the room somewhere, we have a suggestion box. It's not a suggestion for this town hall, and it's not where you put your questions for tonight. It's just a suggestion box for things that you think either need to be worked on in terms of subject matter, things you think you'd like to see happen in our district offices. I would like all of you, at some point in the evening, to meet our district staff so that you know who you're calling and what kinds of areas of expertise they have, whatever your issue might be, whether it's a social security issue, a Medicare issue, a postal issue. We get a lot of phone calls about postal service. But whatever it might be, I want you to feel like our offices, I should say, we have an office in Allentown, an office in Easton, and an office in Stroudsburg, and of course, our Washington, D.C. office. But I want you to think of those offices as a resource for you. And if we aren't able to help you, we will be able to steer you to who can help you. So don't be shy about finding us because you think maybe it doesn't fall within our jurisdiction, or maybe this isn't a federal question. Call us anyway. We'll get you into the right place. And that, to me, is one of the most important parts of the job of being a representative in Congress. Sure, we all go to Washington, we spend a lot of time there, we deal with a lot of issues that aren't necessarily specific to our districts, but to me, the most important work we do is the constituent work. But let me just say, when I ran for this seat, what I pledged to do, and I think I'm fulfilling a promise, was to work on issues, what I call the kitchen table pocketbook issues that matter to the working people in this district, that matter to senior citizens, retirees, people who want to be employed but perhaps aren't able to be because they're disabled or have some other disadvantage. So those are the things that I spend the vast majority of my time on when I'm in Washington. As you heard, I'm on the Education and Labor Committee. I got sworn in a little bit earlier than the rest of the freshman class because I won the special election. So I came in in November, and as a result, had a little bit of an edge over the rest of the freshman class in terms of choosing my committees. My very first choice was Education and Labor. And I wanted Education and Labor because it's the perfect intersection for what is most needed in this district. Attention paying not only to our public schools, definitely to those, but at the community college level, four-year colleges, but just as important is making sure that we are enabling people to get into trade schools, vocational schools, that we are raising that kind of training up as something desirable, something that people want to do and want to go into. So that's where I spend probably 75% of my time when I'm in Washington, is in that committee. So I'm happy to say that I've managed to work on a few things on a very bipartisan basis. I've introduced a couple of bills that have had broad support. I wanted to mention, and then we'll get on to the questions, that I introduced a bill called the Family Health Care Affordability Act that was designed to solve with a small glitch, and that is that a lot of workers who had employer-provided health insurance were not able to take advantage of subsidies to extend that coverage to their families. That act extends the coverage, or permits them to extend the coverage to their families. And the other thing that I worked on on a bipartisan basis, the one I think I'm proud of doing, is an amendment. When we were working on the Protecting People with Preexisting Conditions Act, I offered up an amendment that would prevent this administration, or any future administration, from taking executive action that would cause premiums to increase. Sounds kind of basic. I got 78 Republican votes on that amendment. It was the most number of Republican votes on any part of that health care bill. So I feel as though I fulfilled my promise, not only to the people of this district, but also the promise that I made, that I was going to try very hard to work on a bipartisan basis. I spend a lot of time working with my friends across the aisle, and I will continue to do that. I think it's the only way we move forward in this country. So with that said, as I said before, I want to turn it over to all of you, and you've heard the format, there are two staffers at each side of the room. If you have questions, feel free to just line up and have at it. And by the way, if there's anybody who's a little microphone shy, doesn't want to get up and say their question, feel free to pass an index card to a staffer, and we'll make sure the question gets answered. Yes, sir?
Hello. First off, I want to say thank you for some mental health care that you're working on. You know, my condolences to your loss there.
Thank you.
As a psychiatric nurse, assuming you're a nurse practitioner, that's very important. But I actually have one question and one follow-up for you. Do you believe that there should be a profit loaded in health care? And if not, then you need to work towards Medicare for All and get right out of the private insurance costs.
All right. So the question, so look, there's a lot in that question. Thank you, first of all, for commenting on the mental health initiatives. I do think we are not doing a very good job in this country of treating mental health issues the same way we treat physical health. And I will tell you that since I started working in the mental health space through nothing that I, for no reason that I wanted to work in this area, a number of you may know that I lost my partner in May to suicide, and that's what propelled me into this area. But it really brought home to me how incredibly important it was that we work on these issues. Ever since I've gotten into working on mental health care, I will tell you that I hear from three to four people a day at minimum privately, through Facebook Messenger, texts, phone calls, from people who have had mental health care issues themselves, or have had their families severely affected by mental health care issues. So it's clear to me, you know, this problem has no boundaries. With regard to your question about the profit, and thank you, by the way, for being a nurse and good for you for going on to become an NP, I think they're the great unsung heroes of the health care profession. I would like to see us get to the point where everybody who needs health care gets it, number one. Health care is a right. It is not a privilege. Unfortunately, for far too long, including right up to the present time, it is a privilege. It's not a right. We know that even with the Affordable Care Act, costs went up, continue to rise. I don't think there's a direct correlation, by the way, with the passage of the Affordable Care Act, but that's an issue for another day. So do I think we have to get the profit motive out of health care? Ideally, yes. Do I think that's going to happen tomorrow? No. So what I think, I have signed on to Medicare for All, a number of you may know that. But having said that, because I don't think that happens right away, I believe very strongly that we must improve the Affordable Care Act and include a public option in the next iteration of the Affordable Care Act, which needs to be sooner rather than later. There are so many people in this district who love their private health insurance plan through their employers. And my answer to that is, good for you, I'm glad for you. I'm glad that you have an employer that provides you with wonderful health insurance coverage. But that's about 50% of this district. The other 50% has completely inadequate, too expensive, unable to afford health coverage. Those people deserve health insurance, health coverage, just as much as the people who have good employer-sponsored health care, and that's what we need to get to.
Hi. Pardon me for reading off of my notes. My name is Maura. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a student here at Muhlenberg College. Thank you so much for coming today. I really appreciate it. I'm up here at the microphone to ask you about the climate crisis and specifically the Green New Deal. After reading the recent reports from the International Panel on Climate Change, I began having severe panic attacks about the climate crisis and decided to take action by becoming a climate organizer within the Sunrise Movement. I'm not here on behalf of them, I'm here for my own accord. The climate crisis is one of the first existential issues that my generation is having to deal with, and it is taking a toll on both our physical and mental health, while flooding our homes, destroying our schools, et cetera. In your February and March town halls, you were asked about your support for the Green New Deal, and your response was that you wanted more specifics about how it would work and called a resolution, and I quote, "very broad." Our generation is relying on the Green New Deal in order to ensure a safe and livable future for all of us, while creating hundreds of new sustainable and safe jobs in the Lehigh Valley. After six months of research since your last town halls, and after the IPCC's scary and urgent new reports on the climate crisis, have you changed your position on the Green New Deal? Will you please sign on to co-sponsor Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and Senator Ed Markey's Green New Deal to ensure equitable and livable future for all of us and those who come after us?
All right. Thank you for the question. I am going to ask, I'm just going to ask that people try to tailor their questions and shorten them a little bit so that this long line of people can all be heard. In answer to your question, I think the Green New Deal is a wonderful statement of aspiration and goals. I have not signed on to it. I have, however, worked very, very hard in the climate change space. And the reason I went over and picked up my index card is because I'm terrible at remembering the names of bills, and I'm going to refer to it in a minute. I am the co-chair of a coalition, the New Dennis Coalition on Climate Change. Two of the members of that coalition are climate scientists and somebody who has worked in the field of climate change for years. We, I, here's my problem with the Green New Deal. It hasn't advanced any specific legislation. I think it's a wonderful statement of aspiration, but what I want to see is, I want to see things done. I have two children myself who are in their mid-20s. I hope someday to have grandchildren. I am as concerned about climate change as you are. I promise you that. But what I think we need to do is actually find the solutions to climate change. So I have signed on to, and this is where I need my card, H.R. 9, first of all, Climate Action Now, which was voted on and passed by the House of Representatives to prevent the United States from withdrawing from the Paris Climate Accord. That is the bare minimum, in my view. And I'm happy to say that notwithstanding the administration's plan to withdraw from it, I'm reassured that a number of large companies and municipalities have continued to fulfill their obligations under the Paris Climate Accord. But more importantly, I think, is H.R. 763, which is the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. I am a co-sponsor of that, and it would create a carbon dividend trust fund to encourage market-driven innovation of clean energy tech and market efficiencies to reduce pollution. Let me talk about that. I really believe that if we push industries to police themselves and don't take no for an answer, and require them to, and often they do require a push, and often they require government regulation, that we will solve this problem, but with them, not against them. We have to work on market-driven solutions to this, and I believe we can do that. The other thing that I have signed on to is the 100% Clean Economy Act, which would get the United States on track to achieve 100% clean energy economy by 2050 at the absolute latest. Most prognosticators say that it will be sooner than that. Yes?
I'm going to read. Okay. Currently, there are over 300 pieces of legislation in the House and/or Senate having to do with education, many of them benefiting public education, such as Success in the Middle Act, Keep Our Promise to America's Children and Teachers Act, and the IDEA Full Funding Acts. Many have funding attached that would help our several school districts like Allentown better serve our most vulnerable citizens. Therefore, I have two questions. What legislation benefiting public education are you supporting or working on currently? And what can the citizen do to help Congress see the need and benefit of a free, quality public education for all of America's children?
Excellent question. I will tell you that I am a very staunch believer in public schools. My children went to public schools, I always went to public schools. I think that we have an absolute obligation to support the public school systems of the United States. We're not doing a good enough job of it. Brown versus Board of Education was decided more than 50 years ago, and our schools are more segregated now than they were then. And that's because of the way we fund public schools. They're funded by property taxes by and large. It's not good for the taxpayer, but more importantly, it's not good for our students. So we absolutely have to get to more equitable funding solutions. That's just at the public school K to 12 level. But we also, as I referenced in my opening remarks, have to make sure that we are making higher education more affordable. Note that I didn't say college. College is a great part of that. But we also have to make sure that people who do not want to get a four-year degree or who are not inclined to go to college are also supported in their quest for a higher education, because we know that all higher education leads to higher wages, it keeps people off the streets, quite frankly, it keeps our criminal justice system less busy. And so supporting higher education in whatever form we need to is absolutely essential in this country. So we are currently working in the Education and Labor Committee on reauthorizing the Higher Education Act. I am not going to go through all of the provisions of that, but I will tell you that I believe it's going to be a new and improved version of the Higher Education Act, including increased funding for Pell Grants and broader scope of Pell Grants. Right now, Pell Grants are only available to people who are seeking a two- or four-year college degree, and frankly, the amount under Pell Grants is inadequate. We need to expand that so that somebody who wants to get a certificate in, say, aviation mechanics, which they offer, I think it's an LTRIC, eight- or nine-month program, that person should be able to get a Pell Grant, just as much as the person who wants to go study liberal arts. So that's just some of the things that I'm trying to do.
Hi. My name is Valerie. I'm at Muhlenberg College, and I lead the College Admissions Mentor Program at William Allen High School. And through working with these students, I've learned that Wolf Harclin High School students receive school busing because they're constituted as a suburban district. William Allen students do not because they're considered an urban district. So the majority of these students are shelling out $60 a month to pay for the public bus to get to school, or they are walking 45 minutes from the south side of Allentown at 6:00 a.m. to be able to get there, or because it's not safe, they're simply not going to school, which is causing a chronic absenteeism epidemic. In this program, because students don't have $60 a month, they're so much below the poverty line that 100% of students at William Allen are receiving free lunch, and that's causing A children's rights issue, it's the right to education. I know that you're on the committee for that, that's a priority for you, but a student cannot learn at all, let alone learn to the fullest, if they don't know how they're going to get to school when they wake up in the morning, or if disposable income is a determiner in that equal education.
So this gets back to the issue that I just addressed, which is the inequality in funding for education. Allentown is considered an urban school district. I've lived in Allentown, I'm a city solicitor here, I can tell you that it is not walkable for a large portion of the district. It always comes back to funding. Every single time, it comes back to funding. And so partly, and I don't think it's as much of a suburban, urban distinction as is the property tax base. Harclin has the property tax base to afford a lot of nice things, including busing. Allentown does not. If you added to Allentown's school, and we've got at least one school member of the Allentown School Board here, I haven't seen anybody else, but if you added the cost of busing to the Allentown School District budget, it would implode. Am I right, Ms. Harris? So it, again, comes back to fair funding.
So my question is, what can we do to talk about that issue and make that as much a priority as whether students in the school, because they're not coming to school?
Well, the way, unfortunately, much of the education budget is allocated through the states, but at the federal level, we can create more funding sources that get passed on to the school district. We are in charge of how the school districts spend their money. That's left up to individual school districts in the state, but I think it all starts at the top with appropriate funding. Next?
Thank you, Congresswoman. In an interview with Lehigh Valley's The Brown and White, you said, and I quote, "I do not believe a child's education should be dependent on the zip code they live in." Yet your constituents, to this day, attend school in one of the worst-rated school districts in the nation, the Allentown School District. While they continue to attend these failing schools, yourself, along your colleagues in Congress are pursuing impeachment, which according to several polls, the majority of Americans do not support. When are we going to...
Wait, wait, let's let him finish his question, please.
When are we going to see meaningful education reform, which is what Americans truly want the representatives to focus on?
So let me, let me answer that question by saying that most of us in Congress are spending every single day on vital issues like education. It is where, as I started to say at the beginning, it's where I spend the vast majority of my time on education and labor. So it is a mistake to think that those of us in Washington are spending all of our time on impeachment. There will be a few select members of Congress who are spending their time on an impeachment inquiry, not on impeachment itself, and the rest of us will be continuing to work on the problems that they've identified as well as others. And I assure you that my work on education and labor is not going to stop because there is an impeachment inquiry happening.
Hi, Congresswoman. Thank you for coming on here. Most Congress people don't do this monthly, and for that, I do want to thank you before I get into my question. So we took, me and you have personally, have talked a lot about the Green New Deal together.
Yeah?
I think three times now. Still don't really know where you stand, but...
I think I just addressed that with two questions.
I know, I know. But people are dying, Congresswoman.
Okay, let me...
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
People are dying. I've lost a lot of sleep. I've watched my Great Slip, and it feels, I'm powerless. There's nothing I can do. I'm watching as the supposed opposition party just sort of lets everyone destroy the climate. And they sit on stage and they say, "Well, we want to pursue it, but only if we can find a market-based solution." So my question to you is, how many more people have to die before you're willing to explore other options?
Well, first of all, let me just, I'm going to address what I think is central to your question. It seems as though you believe that if I signed on to the Green New Deal, and everybody else in Congress did, that we would solve the climate crisis. And that is the fundamental point of disagreement that we have. Signing on to a statement of aspiration and goals, and they are wonderful goals, and let me say this about the Green New Deal, the wonderful thing about it is, it made all of us start talking about this, and I think that is a really, really positive thing. And I think that is a really, really positive thing. Wanting something and accomplishing it are two different things. I'm focused on accomplishing it. And I can't say anything beyond that, but I will tell you that I will spend as much time as I possibly can on this crisis. I told you before, it matters not just to me. It matters to my kids. It matters to my grandkids. And it matters to all of you. You know, college students are my favorite group of people to talk to. And I mean that. I've been to the colleges throughout my campaign and since, I am keenly aware of these issues. I go back to, it's one thing to talk about things and it's another thing to accomplish them. And that's what I'm really focused on doing.
My question was not about the Green New Deal this time. I asked, how many people will have to die before you're going to look at this? And that is not based on the market.
I can't answer that question because I don't think that those two things are equivalent. Sorry.
Good evening, Congresswoman Wild. My name is Ken, and I live in Calhoun.
Hi, Ken.
I'm a U.S. Air Force veteran and served in the Second Fleet and worked at Type II missile bases. When I worked there, we were given specific directions as to what we could talk about, what we could not talk about, and such as not divulging any information whatsoever, not taking pictures, so on and so forth. And I've known members of the military who are in jail right now or having taken pictures. But yet, someone like Hillary Clinton, who had a private server and conducted governmental affairs...
Okay, let the gentleman finish his question, please.
Through the private server, hasn't served one day at a time in jail. Whereas, if I had done that, I would not be here talking to you right now. So, my question for you is, do you believe there is a two-tiered justice system, one for your constituents and as a politician, one for yourself?
And let me, let me first of all, thank you for your service. And I'm not doing that lightly because I will tell you, my father was an Air Force veteran as well. He was career Air Force. It's the only job he ever held from the age of 17 until today he retired. So, I fully appreciate the sacrifices that people in the military make. With regard to your question, I don't, there should not be a two-tiered system. I don't believe that there is. I'm not going to relitigate the issue of Hillary's emails. I'm sorry. I just feel like it's counterproductive to go back and relitigate that issue. I think the important thing that you hit on is that we should not have a two-tiered system of justice. It's one of the reasons that I serve on the Ethics Committee of Congress because I, and that's an internal committee that literally oversees what fellow members of Congress do. Okay? And we get complaints on a regular basis from staff, from outsiders. And we investigate them. We hold hearings on them if necessary, and we act on them. So, I certainly don't believe there should be a two-tiered system of justice. In fact, if anything, I think politicians should be held to a higher standard than our constituents.
Hi, Susan. I've spoken before.
Okay.
I'm a nurse. I'm also a spiritual grief specialist. I wanted to ask you, if I hit the House, Adam Schiff, hold those that refuse to cooperate in contempt, find them and put them in jail.
Adam Schiff is not a judge. He's a member of Congress who is charged with the responsibility for investigating actions that have been taken. He does, with Congress, actually, the Sergeant at Arms has some limited powers to incarcerate people. Those haven't been used ever, as far as I know. And so, the answer to that is, it's our job to get all of the facts out. His job to get all of the facts out. And then, that'll take us where it takes us. But that's not the job of a member of Congress. Your honor. Yes, sir.
My name is David Pollak. Anyway, my question is kind of related to your position on foreign affairs. But I think the underlying questions that you've already asked are directly related to one issue. And that one issue I will focus on. I have extensive experience in working with military electronics and commercial electronics and working with national security. And I know 100% for a fact that China has been at war with us for at least 25, 30 years. I have personal direct knowledge, you know, that I figured out through time through working with engineers. And so, one of the strategies of the warfare is undermine the economy. And it undermines the economy in healthcare and undermines economy in production. In the 1980s, we moved into the COTS program, the Civil War program, that meant our military was based upon that. I've done space work. And I look at the chips that I use to sign with. They have, same company has an office in Shanghai. The existing existential threat is China. So, while we focus on everything else and a lot of noise, China's at war and they're winning. They've killed 100 million of their own people. They're killing people in Hong Kong. The Tiananmen Square, they killed people. So, in your position, what are you going to do to help Trump fight China? Because we have to fight enough. Because they will not stop.
So, let me just, let me say this. It's, one of the gratifying things about being on foreign affairs is there seems to be a lot of agreement on both sides of the aisle in that committee about national security. We are all incredibly devoted to the topic of national security. There's a lot of consensus among us. I agree with you about China, by the way. Maybe not every single point. But I agree that they have undermined our economy. I believe that they have made inroads in continents like Africa in a way that we've been very slow to get into trade and to developing businesses in Africa as they have done. And I'm very familiar with the human rights violations. I actually gave a speech on the House floor about the plight of the Uyghurs in China and the fact that they have been put in detention camps. China is using facial recognition technology to identify the Uyghurs and literally taking people off the street. I've spoken with people here who are constituents but not voters because they are not citizens. But they have family members who have actually been held in those camps. I'm very much aware of it, and it's one of the things that I'm most devoted to working on in foreign affairs. I will also tell you, one of the reasons I most wanted to get on foreign affairs was because not, I didn't anticipate as much in the field of national security as trade. You know, we have got to make sure that we have trading partners around the world. The manufacturers right here in the seventh district need to know that they have got places that they can do business and that the playing field will be level. And right now, it's not. You're absolutely right about that, sir.
They are investing in social media right now. And they are making... Just recently, the Trump's residence site...
Tell you what, let's talk, why don't we talk after? I'd be happy to talk to you after the town hall. I just want to make sure we get to everybody's questions.
Hello, I'm Jesse Snyder, our retired teacher from the Allentown School District.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's a wonderful district. The kids are unbelievable. But I wanted to thank you for carrying on with such strength in the face of a tragedy.
Thank you.
It's really amazing. Work is therapy for me. Yes, and thank you for coming to a Citizens Climate Lobby meeting in Lehigh Valley. And I understand the passion of the young people for the Green New Deal. And it's an aspiration, but we have to be specific. And the energy, you're a co-sponsor of the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, which is an act to put fees on carbon dioxide emissions at the source. And those dividends go back to people. And we predict that it will reduce carbon dioxide emissions 40% in the next decade. So, I think what you're saying is we have to start somewhere with specifics.
We absolutely have to have specifics. That was my, really what I was trying to say. And I will add that that was one of the very first bills I signed on to when I got to Congress.
I know, and I'm just wondering. I know there are 63 co-sponsors right now, but I wonder, what is the status? Like, we don't know what's happening.
I, you know, 60, I'm a little dismayed that there are only 63 co-sponsors. I haven't looked at that lately. And I will make it my business to go back and talk to my fellow members about getting on to that bill. Ted Deutsch was the original sponsor of that bill from Florida. And as I said, I signed on to it almost immediately when I got there. And I will make it my business to go talk to other members about doing so. Thank you.
Good evening, Congresswoman. My name is Leslie Weaver. I am an Allentown resident and a public school teacher in Berks County. And my question is specifically about education. I'm not sure if Congress people are aware that more and more children who are coming into the public education system with trauma in their background are becoming increasingly violent in the classroom. They may not qualify for any type of special education. And the burden is now being placed on teachers, guidance counselors, principals, and the like. And children are afraid to come to school because of the other children who are not receiving the attention they deserve. Is there anything that Congress can do? I was intrigued by your mental health evaluation comment at your August Town Hall meeting with Trump with this question. How can you help us to service the children who have this trauma and are acting violently while keeping everybody safe?
Let me first say that I don't believe it should be the job of a teacher to be a mental health counselor, disciplinarian, and the numerous other things that teachers are now called upon to do. We recently held a hearing, and when I say recently, within the last two weeks in Education and Labor, about what are called ACEs, A-C-E-S, adverse childhood experiences. ACEs can be anything from living in a family where nutrition is a problem to seeing violence on your streets, having gangs in the neighborhood, having a parent in prison, having mental health issues in the household. There are all kinds of things. And what we heard from, we heard from teachers as well as other experts, is that the teachers are being called upon to deal with these issues. So, number one, I firmly believe that we, I've already said, we have to make mental health a priority in this country. But we need to make the mental health of our youngsters a first priority. Because mental health... Mental health problems do not start at age 18. They generally develop earlier in life. I'm a big believer that we should be doing baseline mental health evaluations in the schools the same way we require students to have their vaccinations and that kind of thing before they come to school. Not only so that we can identify the, mostly so we can identify the students who have mental health issues, but also make sure that that is being addressed in some way. And that these students aren't just being treated as troublemakers in the schools. And I hear, I remember the number of the superintendents around this area, the school superintendents, and they all told me the same thing, which is, we don't have enough mental health care. We've got one psychologist, if a psychologist, if not a psychologist, that we share with six or seven or eight schools. That is inadequate. And we've got to do something about it. I think we need to be devoting more resources to it in our, that's part of the whole school funding problem that I believe we have. We've got to get more mental health care workers in the schools.
Is there any movement on it now or is it an aspiration for you to do so?
Right now, as far as I know, it's an aspiration. But I consider, I will make it a high priority of mine because I'm so committed to this issue at this time.
Good evening, Congresswoman Wild. I'm a church from Bethlehem. I actually am a retired elementary school counselor. Yes, I was a very, very busy person.
When did you stop? When did you retire?
2014.
Okay, so you have recent experience.
Yes. What I'm here today about is, first of all, to thank you very much for the terrific energy and concentration you have shown. You've hit the ground running as you had to fill in with the special election. And I'm also a member of Citizens Climate Lobby. And we are very thrilled with her because she took early leadership in signing up for HR 763. Now, we've mentioned several times tonight, and it has been mentioned, and I'm not sure if some of the folks got it, the Green Deal is aspirational. HR 763 is something that takes real action. And she has signed up for that. She's made efforts to do things for it. But I want to ask you, since I'm not going to channel Greta Thunberg tonight, which maybe some of the other students were doing a little bit.
I'm a fan, by the way.
I'm wondering if you, we've seen her in the news over the last two weeks. I'm actually getting to my question. Do you sense anything a little bit different in the atmosphere with someone who is 16 and actually really going to have to deal with the future, with, on the path we're going in regards to climate change? Have you noticed a change in the atmosphere?
Well, I sense a fourth, and I think that one of the best things about the Green New Deal is that it has been a call to action from a whole lot of people who might have put it on the back burner. Greta Thunberg is another one of those people. All of the young people who are stepping forward and challenging me and every other member of Congress to keep working on this issue are going to be directly responsible for why we will come up with solutions and continue to work on solutions. So I am hopeful in that way. I really do believe that the young people of America are the ones who will really bring about change in many areas.
My name is Victor.
Hi, Victor.
I'm a 71-year-old combat veteran from Vietnam. I'm a soldier of the United States Civil War with liberty and justice for all. The issue I'll be talking about, it's on paper, I'll give it to you a little later. Basically, this district has 39,000 veterans, 2.5 average family size, so we're talking about 100,000 veteran families, and this is a congressional district. 100,000. I volunteer as a service officer in Lehigh in Bucks County. My top concern, and I'm a lifetime veteran, I'm a lifetime member of three different veteran organizations, my top concern is the veteran suicide rate. The male veteran suicide rate is about twice as high as the national.
I'm aware.
And I just want to reach back to the greatest generation. You know, World War II is now 74 years behind us. The medal that was given as a victory medal at the end of World War II, 12 million copies, was common medal ever given, had on the back of it the four freedoms. Freedom from fear, freedom from want, freedom of speech, freedom of religion. That's what made them the greatest generation, as opposed to ours, which is probably the latest generation.
Well, let me just say, I guess I'm a little more of an optimist than you are. And I believe that we have a lot to look forward to, and that we have people, not just younger people, but especially younger people, but I think we have people throughout this country who want to work to make things better, and want to work constructively and harmoniously to make sure that we continue to have a country that thrives and prospers and that everybody in the community can. I want to get back to your...
Answer my question.
I didn't realize, okay.
All right, Victor. What I'm asking for, I'll give it in writing, we don't have enough people to provide proper burials for dying veterans. The World War II generation is now getting older. There is no longer enough people at the burial post to provide the honor guards. I would like to see you support having a dozen people for every four congressional districts to be full-time paid individuals, providing at least two people and a yoga for each funeral.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I'm a resident military of the 14th New York District, and I support everything Ocasio is doing.
Interesting. Thank you.
And I have a list for you of my 20 different articles of impeachment.
Okay. But I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask my staff to make a note that I think that's an excellent idea, Victor, for burials of veterans, for sure. Yes, this side.
Hi, I'm Leora Finkel. I've met you once before, though you probably don't remember.
I do.
Great. I'm a Maryland student, I'm originally from New Jersey. I first want to thank you for doing these panel meetings at all. In my district in New Jersey, up until this past election cycle, we had a representative who was refusing to meet with constituents, and I don't really know what's going on in my district.
You have some of that, I'll have some in you, too.
Regardless, thank you for doing this. Hearing the constituents' voices is a part of democracy, and it's very important that you do.
Yes.
You've talked a lot tonight about individual pieces of legislation, mostly that have been brought up by constituents. I really wanted to know overall notable pieces of, just updates that are happening in the Education and Labor Committee.
Okay, so I'm glad you asked that. I recently co-sponsored a bill having to do with increased, again, mental health care on college campuses. We have been working hard on a bill that would improve transparency and students' bill rights for their student loans, and would increase and would ease the FASPA process, the nightmare known as FASPA that everybody has to go through in order to get tuition assistance. The kind of things that we have been working on are making student loans negotiable, and by negotiable, I mean after you get out of college, being able to renegotiate your interest rates as we can with almost every other kind of loan. When I went to school, which was a long, long time ago, I promise you, but I graduated from law, I took myself through college, I started law school, I spent a year in law school paying my own way, and realized that I was never going to make it through law school if I continued to work three jobs. That was the first time I ever went to get a student loan. I did that, and it was really easy in those days. You went down to the student loan office, filled out a piece of paper, and a couple of days later, you got your check in the mail, which was also terribly old-fashioned to get your check in the mail, but anyway. When I graduated from law school, I had something on the order of $18,000 worth of student loan debt. I thought I was going to be broke for the rest of my life. I started repaying that a year after graduation at the rate of $105 a month. It was 1% interest. That was courtesy, by the way, of the federal government. The federal government invested in me, and I was the first lawyer in my family, enabled me to finish law school. My grades improved dramatically as soon as I quit two of my part-time jobs and was only working at one to pay for food and rent. And that is exactly the way we should be viewing the next generation. We should be willing to make investments in them and expecting them to pay it forward. I paid my student loans back in full, and, you know, I'm here. And, you know, but had it not been for that kind of advantage and getting those kinds of loans, I wouldn't be standing here right now. There's no question about it. I came from a middle-class family that did not have the ability to put me through college level and grad school. So I really, so we're working very hard on the student loan issue. That's a big focus of where we are spending our attention.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Colin Harpey. We've actually met once or twice before. Yep, there we go. My question directly is, is back to the environment, not the Green New Deal, don't worry. But it's the subject, the Northern Rockies ecosystem protection act. It's been floating around 20-plus years now. Where do you stand on it? Where is it in the House? Is it ready to get pushed?
I wish I could answer that question for you. I'm not there with that specific piece of legislation. Whoever is on my staff that can make a note of that, we will find out. I don't know what it's about, but I can, I'm guessing from the type that it has to do with protecting the Northern Rockies.
It's protecting the Lower Forty-Eight and all the water sheds that come out of the eastern side of the Rockies, which is everything from the Mississippi on over.
So I remember a time, because I'm older than the students in the front row, that's for sure, when environmental issues were a bipartisan concern. And the thing that makes me happy is that in this district, they continue to be. I hear from people, Republicans and Democrats alike, who care deeply about environmental issues and preserving the sanctity of our land and our waterways. I will look at that. I'm happy to get on it. I don't know what the status is, but if you'll give somebody your contact information, we'll get back to you and let you know. Okay? Thanks. Yes, sir.
Tim Board, West Fairview Street.
Hi, Tim.
I left a, my book with that headset lady of yours.
Okay.
Look here. Article 25, you need to get rid of the president. If you saw the press conference today, he's crazy. He kept going, "Go, Irishman!"
Tim, I'm not going to comment on the president's state of mind. I will tell you, I understand, and you have, and that's fair enough. I will tell you, know that I came out for an impeachment inquiry based solely on the Ukraine phone call. I think an inquiry is absolutely in order, and we will see where the facts lead us.
It is, it is, now.
There's a process for this, Tim.
The Irishman, Kennedy's son.
I didn't hear you.
Kennedy's son, the Irishman. Go watch.
Thank you for your input. I'll take that back with me.
You made it clear that you support our troops. And the best way to support our troops is to end the foreign words and bring our troops home. You support Donald Trump in terms of taking our troops out of Syria and ending war in Afghanistan.
So the answer to that is, number one, I agree with you that we are in far too many wars that go on for far too well, to no good end. We recently, we recently, on a bipartisan basis, voted to take, to end our involvement in the Yemen conflict. We were overruled by the administration. The president vetoed that, and we were not able to override that veto. So the answer to your question specifically about Syria is that, yes, I believe we need to withdraw troops, but I am concerned about the manner in which it was done, and that it was done precipitously. And now, as I recall, that decision by the president to withdraw troops has been delayed. On this issue and all other issues, when it comes to foreign affairs and national security and foreign matters, I think we have to have a very deliberate strategy. I don't believe in foreign policy done by tweet. I believe, I believe in an execution of foreign policy that takes into consideration the good judgment of intelligence officials, military officials, people on the grounds who know what is going on, and then following their advice. And I haven't seen enough of that when it comes to things like Syria and Afghanistan. But I am completely with you that we are involved in far too many engagements across the world where we are losing American troops and to no discernible benefit. Thank you.
I was gonna, my question tonight was going to be about something I've come to the conclusion about, which is that I think the present administration is conducting a war on the poor and the non-wealthy in all kinds of respects. But as I listened to everybody's question, I kind of came to a different conclusion, which is that everything that everybody said is pretty much related, and it's related to the way we fund human needs and our tax system. The fact that you, Jesse Jackson, just had a wonderful article talking about all the great bills that the House passed, but McConnell won't let it come up for a vote. So I came to the conclusion that, which I've come to a lot, and I realize you can only take one thing at a time, that all the things that you support, that are money for education, money to support suicidal veterans, money for the environment, I love the Green New Deal, I disagree that it's, I think it's aspirational, but there are plenty of solutions, and it's that we don't have this, we don't have an administration that will devote this. And I don't think that the carbon fee and dividend is going to happen sooner to help the environment, which is really hurting now, which is why I love you students. My son is in the Sunrise Movement, and I just think you are great, the ones that are working on the environment. But anyway, what I wanted to say was, I think that we need, we need to get this administration out before we do anything else, because they won't let us do any of these great things. You keep passing bills in the House, and they won't go anywhere. The climate, Amelia radiation isn't going to go on anywhere under this administration. So I guess what I'm saying is, everybody in this room has to work on the election to elect. Get out and just beat your neighbors and talk to young people and talk to old people and say, "Are you registered?" If not, call, register and vote, because that's the only way we're going to get to do any of these things. I would go for a Republican if there was a good Republican, but there isn't.
Catherine, let me just, there's a couple things you said, because you make some very valid points. First of all, your point that it's all interrelated, because it is. The truth of the matter is that education, when people are afforded a good education, their health outcomes are better, their likelihood of prospering later in life is better. And guess what? That's also good for seniors, because as we build our economy, as we put younger people into the workforce through very careful strategic educational planning, it means that those of us who want to retire someday are able to do so because we have a strong and vibrant economy, because we've helped younger people get there. So I get really upset by people who say, "Well, nobody ever helped me go to college, so why should we help others?" I am a very big believer that we are all in this together. And we absolutely have to support different segments of the population. We have a terrible problem with income inequality in this country. We've got pharmaceutical executives who are making millions of dollars a year. We've got corporate executives who are making 145 times what their average worker is making. I mean, these are problems. These are really serious problems. Now, that's not to say I don't believe in capitalism, because I do. But unfortunately, capitalism has run rampant in this country when it comes to things like that. And that's the sort of thing that we've got to change our thinking on. And we also should not be giving big tax breaks to the 1% and to corporations at the expense of the middle class. Next question. Hi.
Hi, Congresswoman.
How are you?
I'm doing well. My name is Haley, I use she/her pronouns, I live in Allentown. First, I just want to thank you for co-sponsoring the Global Her Act, which would repeal the global gag rule. My question for you is, do you also support ending the HEALS Amendment, which is currently limiting access to life-saving abortion and reproductive health care abroad?
First, I, let me just say that I am a firmly strong pro-choice. Organizations like Planned Parenthood and other clinics have provided reproductive health services, and no, that doesn't just mean abortion, it means birth control, testing for STDs, PAK smears, and all kinds of things, including for males, condoms and other things. Those things have been provided because of programs like that. So the answer is yes. I do not, we should not have a global gag rule. Was that your question, or what's the second part of the question?
Yeah, we're ending the HEALS Amendment, which is currently limiting funding and access to reproductive health care.
I think that that is wrong. I don't know how else to put it. I think I've made my position on reproductive. I don't understand quite candidly, I don't understand why politicians who are not pro-choice are also opposed to contraceptives and contraceptive clinics. So the answer is yes.
Congresswoman, we've reached the 8 o'clock hour.
All right, well, I'm going to make an executive decision here. We're going to stop the lines where they are now, there are no new people in line, but I'm going to get through these questions, because I promised that I would.
My name is Dominic Macheney, I'm from Martin Street, Pennsylvania.
Hi, Dominic.
It's true to know that, I didn't know this, but Yulkenberg was founded by the person who signed the Bill of Rights, okay, which is part of what I want to talk about today. Okay, now what I have to say, even though I'm unpopular with everybody, but I urge everyone to take a look at the Bill of Rights and read it, what this man wrote, because it's being undermined right now. And it's being undermined with some false statistics and hyperbole, okay? I contacted you a couple times, one on the free speech first amendment, and now this time on the second amendment. Now, we shouldn't be limited with what we can do under that Bill of Rights. That's our law, okay? I served in Vietnam during the Tet Offensive with the Marine Corps. I saw hundreds of men rip apart on a battlefield defending the Constitution that we were told we were defending. I'm still defending it, okay? It's not popular, because you have all this news and all this tragedy happening. I'd like to read your quote from Alexander Hamilton. Do we have, you know, why wasn't anyone else challenged? Because they like what I'm saying, they try and shut me down? Well, you know, I did pick up half the time. I'd like to sound like I'm going to read what I have to say, so if you'd be quiet, we'd be able to pick it up. The truth unquestionably is that the only path to a subversion of the republican system of the country is by flattering the prejudice of the people and exciting their jealousies and apprehensions to throw affairs into confusion and bring on civil promotion. That's happening. That's happening right now, I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your input. Next question over here.
Hi, I'm Mike.
Hi, Mike.
How are you? So, oh, that wasn't my question. My question is...
Okay, you're done.
My question is, how much is everything that we've been talking about tonight going to be affected by the election of 2019, which happens in just a few weeks, and how would a huge turnout in those state elections in 2019 affect what goes on in Washington?
Boy, am I happy that you asked that question. I will tell you, let me just remind everybody, there are elections every single year, not every two years, not every four years. Please vote this year. And the reason I say that is, first of all, they are local elections, and your local elected officials have more of an everyday impact on your life than those of us at the federal level. So there are judicial reasons, judges have tremendous importance in our local community in terms of the cases that they hear and decide. But a very big turnout this year would be a signal, I believe, to Washington that we need to pay attention to the people who vote us in.
Congresswoman, while we met some time ago, I think when you were running for office, and I recall during that period that you were very much in favor of civil rights for the LGBTQ community. I've been involved in intensive research over the past four years on transgender and some of the civil rights problems that they've been having. I was wondering, one in particular that people are probably more familiar with than some of the other transgender issues that once in a while come into the news, potty parity bill. Would you be willing to introduce a federal potty parity bill? Just introduce it? You know, I'm not saying that we necessarily have to follow through with it, because it would be very difficult. I've had difficulty with colleagues who have a problem accepting some of the issues that are discussed.
Okay, so I'm not exactly sure what a potty parity bill would look like, and so I can't answer that, but I will tell you, and if this doesn't answer your question, please say so. I am a firm supporter of LGBTQ rights. I signed on to the Equality Act. I firmly believe that no person in this country should suffer from any type of discrimination because of their sexual or gender orientation, whether that be in housing, in their job, or otherwise. So, you know, as I said, I don't know what the bill itself would be, we can talk about that after this, and I'm happy to talk about it to you. That's one of the important acts, by the way, that was passed by the House of Representatives, the Equality Act, that has not been taken up by the Senate.
Congresswoman, thank you for being here, and then for being at Yulkenberg, it's good to have some excitement. Quick question for you. I know that you pride yourself on being a female Democrat Congresswoman. I know that if I'm not mistaken, if you're correct, and if I am, you also pride yourself on being a Jewish Congresswoman. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I was just wondering, a few weeks ago, when, or a few months ago at this point, when your colleagues in the same party, Ilhan Omar, Rashida Tlaib, I don't see, in Ilhan Omar's case said that it's all about the Benjamins, and Rashida Tlaib's case said... case said that it's all about the Benjamins, and Rashida Tlaib's case said that she has a common feeling when she thinks about the Holocaust, and in AOC's case, comparing the concentration camps to the detention camps. How did that make you feel as it is?
So, let me start by answering that question by telling you that I am deeply concerned about antisemitism in this country and around the world. It is a pervasive problem. It is on the uptick. And to the extent that this administration attacks Democratic voters, or voters who vote Democratic, as being antisemitic, I am deeply offended. It's untrue, and it is an insult to those voters. Because the truth of the matter is that hate is hate. And if you don't think people who hate LGBT people, or hate immigrants, or black and brown people, don't by and large also have a serious dislike for Jews, I would suggest otherwise. So I think that we have to fight antisemitism and all forms of hate at every possible opportunity. In response directly to your question, I have had conversations with both of those members. I have tried to serve as a sounding board and as an educator, and I've told them of my own personal hurt about the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn. I work for the state.
Hi.
I have a quick comment, and then I'm going to go right into my question.
Okay.
I'm just making a comment in regards to Spanish. I'm Puerto Rican. I'm disgusted the way that he treats Puerto Ricans after Maria and everything that happened there. Because, you know, I'm not just going to focus on that. My main question is in regards to something else, it's something that happens in Pennsylvania. I'm a state worker. I work for the Department of Labor and Industry. I do see every day that independent contractors are neglected, or because they are considered not employees for the companies. They are, they can't get unemployment many times, even if they file an appeal, because they are considered independent contractors. I did see that a few months ago, you did have a hearing in Washington where you were trying to pursue that, and, you know, you are looking into trying to see whether or not they can become employees. And that happened in California, where they passed a law, and Uber and Lyft, those two companies, they did decide that, yes, they are going to become employees, but it's not going to be as easy as it seems, just because they passed a law.
I think I know where you're going, so go ahead.
So, please, I just want to, I know that you're supporting that bill, and you're doing that, and I see limo drivers, I see, I see them as slave drivers, as slave workers, because that's what they do. They, they, they're slave workers. They take advantage of them because they don't have...
Carolyn, I know, I think I know where you're coming from. I just, I want to take an opportunity to address this issue. So the misclassification of workers is what we're talking about, people who are called independent contractors, when in fact they are employees. I actually, in my legal career, had a number of cases dealing with this, so I'm pretty familiar with this issue. And it is becoming a major problem, because we've got, we now are turning to a gig industry, where people are hired to drive for Uber or Lyft, and they are not being considered workers, so they're not accruing any money towards retirement. They are not, they're responsible for all of their own taxes, their employer's not paying into the system at all, and they have no rights to unemployment compensation, workers' compensation, and so forth as a result. This is, and has been for some time now, a major problem. It's also a fraud. It is a tax fraud for an employer to call somebody an independent contractor when they in fact aren't. And I will, the one thing, the last thing I'm going to say on this is that an independent contractor is somebody who actually has control over their own hours and manner of work. So you hire a guy to do landscaping at your house, that's an independent contractor, because he, if he doesn't dictate his own hours, he negotiates with you and says, "I'll be there on Tuesday afternoon." He's got control over his own schedule and how he does the work. As opposed to the landscaping company that employs a landscaper by calls him an independent contractor, is evading the law, and it's a problem that we have to address at the federal level, because otherwise we're going to have inconsistency across the country.
Hi, thank you so much for always sharing your background in every answer that you give. You, I really admire that you bring those experiences in.
Thank you.
And you're also a part of one of the most diverse, the U.S.'s diverse freshman class.
Yeah.
So, in spirit of that, I just want to know what we, as constituents, can do so that the next town hall here in Allentown is more representative of the communities that you serve.
Well, I like to think that this is fairly representative, judging from the audience and some of the questions. I will tell you that we have endeavored to have a town hall in different parts of our district. Every single town hall is in a different location. We've had, we will be having them in downtown Allentown. We will be having them in areas of the district that are traditionally perceived as more red, you know, which, you know, I'm not going to just have town halls in areas where I think I'm going to get the friendly questions. And, you know, we've got a lot of people here tonight, many of whom haven't spoken, and I'm sure not everybody here agrees with me. But I completely agree with you. Encourage your friends to come out. Ask, or put it out on social media. Share our announcement of a town hall on your social media so that more and more people see it. But I would love to see more people representative, representative, excuse me. Yes, sir?
Hi, John Jaffe from South White Oaks, Ohio. She's an retired physician, medical director, and first of all, I'm... You haven't heard wrestling yet. Let me commend you on your obvious energy and dedication. It's very clear. I've had it for quite a while, and I think really I'm passionate about what you do. I think you are dedicated, which I probably would say for everyone who sits in the same chamber you do. However...
I knew there was a Howard.
Definitely, however, coming. You know what the Washington DC looks like to an awful lot of people outside of that way right now? Constant, nonstop fighting, contention, accusation, smears even. And I'm not going to pick out any party, but there is this feeling that I think people are sent to Congress to do work for the good of the public. And I think you could make that point, that when they're so busy doing these, it seems endless accusations against the president, like him or not, that's what's going on, two and a half years, forty million dollars, twenty-three federal prosecutors, and all are pro, zero facts. Zero! Who hasn't lost a shirt? So, and I just said with this impeachment, there's a video of Joe Biden bragging about how he...
Let him ask his questions, wait. Let's let Senator Jaffe ask his question.
All I want to say is...
Excuse me, sir.
Well, I think it's a huge issue for the country, and for this polarization divisiveness, how people stop talking to each other. I just want to make a point that there is, there is another way. I did admire when you said you did several collaborative bills, like ours, you just don't hear much of that anymore. And I think more Americans will be happy to hear more of that and less of the accusations in general.
Well, let me just say, sir, that I think I talked a lot about some of the real business of Washington that is being done and that I am working on. I, you know, I didn't come to Congress to pursue an impeachment inquiry. It was the last thing in the world that I wanted. I said regularly, I don't know if you ever came to any of my campaign appearances, I said it will be a two-year distraction, and I don't want to see something that takes away from the work that we need to do for working Americans. And here we are. And all I can say in answer to that is, the administration is, you know, we are guided by the actions of the administration. Those of us who resisted, resisted calls for an impeachment inquiry, were faced with a phone call that our president had with a foreign leader, where he used his office to attempt to extract information about a political opponent. I am not here to defend that political opponent. My interest is in knowing what the facts are, and making sure that the facts are laid out wherever they may lead. And I repeat, I had no interest in going to Washington to be part of an impeachment inquiry. So, you know, unfortunately, I don't believe, the precedent that we would set by ignoring this for all future administrations is unacceptable. So let's get through this inquiry. I hope that it is expeditious. I hope that we get it done. I don't want this to be another Benghazi. And let's, let's get back to the work that we need to do. But let me tell you this, there are so many members of Congress who are just like me, who are spending every day in Washington, working on things like infrastructure, like education, like healthcare, prescription drug prices, and all of the things that all of you want to see progress in. When I am asked by the media, "What does your district think about the impeachment inquiry?", my answer is, "My district is more interested in knowing about prescription drug prices and what we're going to do about the price of insulin." And that's exactly what I'm committed to. And we don't all know about it, and I don't think that we've probably done enough of a good job of messaging it. It's largely because people news. And I love the media. I have total respect for a free press. But let's face it, reigning stride, what is covered in the news.
I should say one last thing. I'm going to plug into Planned Parenthood. I work for them for years. It literally sickens me to see people attack them for what they do. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. And for those of you who couldn't hear, Senator Jaffe, he was, he was speaking up on behalf of Planned Parenthood and congratulating the work they did. We 100% agree on that. Yes, sir?
My name is Stefan. I live in Allentown.
Hi, Stefan.
Hi. Recently, I lived, on last August, I was walking through Pennsylvania State Gameways and came across the natural gas drill. And I could hear the sound of rushing air. I put my hand in front of it and felt a light breeze coming out of the pipe. My understanding of HR 763 is what, no. The one you sponsored, is we remove, we remove all regulations on the emissions at wellheads.
I'm not part of that bill at all, if there is such a bill. The bills I have signed on to do not do that.
The carbon fee and dividend bill, it's part of removing the EPA regulations.
It certainly does not provide for additional emissions from pipelines.
How would you, how would they measure the amount of natural gases that is...
They have to be, they have, they have to be secured and measured in that way. You can't just have them rushing into, the scenario that you described suggests to me that it's something that is just evaporating into the atmosphere. Correct. Yeah, that's, that's not part of this.
Hi, Congresswoman. My name is Taylor. I'm a senior at Yulmburg, but my family lives in Easton, Pennsylvania, so a residential place. I'm also a recent survivor of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and as I'm sure you... As I'm sure you're aware, cancer care in the Lehigh Valley is both so vital, but so overcrowded and so hard to access at times. Sometimes infusion centers have months of wait lists, and cancer is a right now situation. So I was wondering what you're doing to expand cancer care in the Lehigh Valley, or just make it more affordable for both the elderly who suffer and young people like me?
So, first of all, I know that you have a big community of supporters here who are happy to hear that you are a survivor. Cancer care is just part of the bigger picture, which is healthcare in general, whether it's diabetes, cancer care, heart disease, or whatever other disease you want to mention. We have an under-resourced healthcare system. I have been a co-sponsor of a bill to increase the number of residency programs in this country, because we hear that we don't have enough medical residents to go into these fields that are so vital. We have got, but the other thing that I hear a lot about is the cost of medical education. They, you know, we all think of doctors as being rich, you know, right? Doctor, did I lose Dr. Jaffe? No, I lost Dr. Jaffe. But let me just say, they graduate with so much debt, that many of these physicians are driven to go into fields that are more lucrative, simply because they have to pay off their student loan debt. And we have got to be encouraging people to go into the public health service. We've got to be making sure that there is a direct correlation between the type and amount of loan incurred, and get these people where we need them, which is taking care of people like you. So I see it as part of a much bigger picture. And I'm glad you're here in the Lehigh Valley. I'm proud, I'm always proud to talk about our healthcare systems here. I know that there sometimes is longer waiting than we would like for sure. But on the other hand, I moved here in 1987, when Lehigh Valley Hospital and St. Luke's Hospital were fairly small, like certainly by today's standards, and they've grown into award-winning gigantic regional healthcare centers. And, you know, I know a lot of people complain that there are too many of them, you know, spread around the district. But I will tell you that healthcare, certainly the access to it, I'm not talking about affordability, the access to it is better in the Lehigh Valley than it is in so many parts of the country. But it, and, you know, I really, I'm very, very concerned about our lack of rural hospitals and closing of rural hospitals, because that's going to affect an awful lot of people in this country. So, thank you.
Good evening, Susan.
Hi.
Sean Curran, you've met me several times. I, 15 years ago, entered the education profession as a librarian, for whatever reason, but that's okay. And incurred a boatload of debt, and started paying it off, and paid it off, and paid it off. And then I heard about the wonderful loan repayment system 14 years later. So going through their draconian process that is paid off, what, 6% maybe, of the loan repayment stuff? And then going through the expansion of that, and also getting denied, because after 14 years, I still owe the $45,000, $45,000 that I started out with. I haven't paid enough. You said something the other night when we were talking at one of the other town halls or roundtables, that you had been looking into what was going on with Betsy DeVos' lack of attention to this matter. And I'm wondering if you could expand on that.
Well, Betsy DeVos testified before the Education and Labor Committee, and I believe that Betsy DeVos' approach to education is that if you're rich enough, you can be educated. And I'm sorry to say that. I think it's a sad statement, and it's not me bashing the administration, it's me watching someone who is in charge of such a critically important agency as education, who treats it as something that should be completely privatized. So in answer to your question, we have to make, number one, we have to make student loans much more understandable. I, I think 18-year-olds are wonderful human beings, but I will tell you that reading the fine print of a student loan document is beyond most people's ability, no matter what age they are. And so to, when you get, when you get an automobile loan, you will get a statement of, this is how much the car will cost you if you take the full five years, or six years, or whatever it is, to pay it off. You don't get that with a student loan. And that, to me, is wrong. Why are we not putting it in very basic terms so that people know exactly what they're getting into, number one? Secondly, we've got to be able to renegotiate. Third, I think student loans should be dischargeable and bankruptcy just as other type of loans. There is no reason that someone who graduates in their early twenties should be saddled with something that literally bankrupts them. And if, this is a long-term problem. This is not us just giving something away to the younger generation. What we are doing, it's like getting, going back full circle, is... What we are doing, it's like getting, going back full circle, is we are helping the next generation become responsible, productive human beings, who can do things like buy a house and have a family without crippling debt. All right, then, I'm sorry if that wasn't your question. Tell me what your question was.
Howard.
Or we can talk afterwards. I'm sorry, I didn't, if I didn't answer your question, I thought it was... Any, we have anybody over there, Ted? Okay. Yes, sir?
How you doing, Susan? Louis Perez.
Hi, Louis.
How you doing? We've spoken several times, so I appreciate everything you enjoy here in the Lehigh Valley. Personally, I understand where you're coming from with the loss of your partner, so I apologize again for that. I just lost my uncle to an overdose just about two weeks ago. With that being said, this is the reason why I do what I do. I hear everybody going in full circles here about the requirement, about, you know, the education, kids in the valley. I personally grew up here in the Lehigh Valley. I came here in late seventy-eight, seventy-nine, got here, basically was raised here, but I grew up on Center City, Allentown. With that being said, a lot of the kids in the valley, I work with a lot of kids here at the support programs for tons of organizations, and with the school district, I help out with a lot of different things in the valley. Point of that, sorry, the point of that was, a lot of these kids are not interested in what politics are, or even voting, and I being one of them, I knew about drugs, about guns, I knew how to drive before my parents even talked to me about politics. It's not something that families discuss in Center City, at least from what I'm, I'm understanding and learning. And you came out to visit some kids not so long ago at the youth bill program. I wanna thank you for that, 'cause honestly, I'm saying it now, I'm getting children. You have four kids, they have really impacted their lives, and they have, since you've visited them, have come with me to about five different community events, getting involved with politics, are encouraging their friends to vote, and two of them, unless they have just confessed to me, that they just got off for drugs because of the impact that you have helped make in their lives.
I will tell you that the most rewarding thing about being in Congress is the individual impact stories. When I started talking about the mental health issues, and hearing from people individually, giving them a voice, and sometimes directing them to resources, sometimes just being there to listen to them, that's what I'm trying to do. So the other thing I will say just about youth involvement, is that we've got to bring back civics in the schools. And I believe that they should be registering all high school graduates to vote as part of their graduation process. And it's my political activity as a fifth member. Thank you for your comments.
Just to let you know, we are gonna do some more efforts in recovery and mental health, so we have a couple of facilities that we're looking at, I'll definitely be reaching out to.
Good. Please do. By the way, for anybody who wants to know, I pretty much will go talk to any organization that asks to speak, to speak to them. So if you have somebody you'd like to speak to, just let us know.
Hi, I'm Patrick. I'm from New York, so a lot of us are little, we are appreciative of some of the things that President Cortez has done, one of which, and I'll pardon me if I'm incorrect or misinformed on some of the things, but one of them is her interest in an agreement with Senator Ted Cruz on a bill that combats, if not at least mitigates, the effects of corporate lobbying on Congress members, on certain bills such as gun laws. And I was just wondering, 'cause you said earlier and before this, that you were interested in working with, going across the aisle and working with other members of Congress, which I am very appreciative of, but I was just wondering, how do we combat the members of Congress that are unwilling to move at all in their stances because they are influenced by any kind of lobbying, such as from the National Rifle Association, on these things like gun rights?
You vote them out.
Oh.
On that note, I would just say that one of our very first bills, that was passed this year in the House, was H.R. 1, which is a democracy reform bill. It is, its main aim, not its only aim, but its main aim is to get dark money out of politics, corporate money out of politics. I do not take corporate PAC money, and even though I don't take corporate PAC money, and I certainly don't take money from pharma, we get phone calls from the pharmaceutical industry regularly, trying to influence my vote. So the, believe me, pharma, by the way, has two lobbyists for every member of Congress, so think about that for a second. So I'm with you. I don't disagree with you. We need to pass H.R. 1, we need to, one of the things that's in H.R. 1 that I'm particularly proud of, that I didn't mention before...
And I realize you...
Part of the bill would require early voting in all federal elections across the country. I specify federal elections because that's the only thing we have jurisdiction over, but if, that would have the effect of also forcing early voting in state elections, because states are not gonna hold two different election days. And I think that's vital, because that's something that directly affects working people. People who have to go to a job and then run home and get, or run to the school and pick up their kids and get home and put dinner on the table are less likely to vote, let's face it. If you have a long commute, you're not gonna vote in the morning. So early voting is essential. I'm getting pretty far away from your question, but I wanted to put in my plug for H.R. 1, but my answer to your question is exactly what it was at first. Vote them out. If they are affected by corporate money in their, that's coming into their campaign, get rid of them. Thank you all. I'm just gonna close by saying that this was a really spirited and lively Oak Town Hall, more so than we have had in the past. I'm really happy about that. I know that not everybody in this audience agrees with every single thing that I have said, or that I believe in, or that I vote for. And I just wanna tell you, I wanna hear your opinions. I really, I am capable of being influenced, not by corporate money, but by my constituents. And so it's an open door. Come talk to me. We have constituent power hours. Every time I'm back in the district, you call my district office, we have district offices in Allentown, Easton, and Strasburg, we will make sure that you get an appointment with me, and you can talk about whatever you wanna talk about. So thank you.